Good evening. We call to order the regular meeting of West Valley City Council. We note that we have six members of the council present. Councilman Don Christiansen is excused. With that, the opening ceremony tonight, I have invited, just as a change of pace, our Assistant City Manager, Mr. Paul Isaac, who is also an ecclesiastical leader in his church. He is an LBS bishop. We'll invite him to come down and offer a prayer for our opening ceremony tonight.
Our Father in Heaven, we bow before you this evening with gratitude in our hearts for the privilege and honor it is to be here this evening, to experience and participate in our government and the activities of this government. We pray a blessing to be not only with this, our elected officials in city council and mayor, but also with the citizens who are here tonight to participate in this event with us and celebrate the freedoms that we enjoy in this country. We express our gratitude unto thee for the wisdom and insight the Tao has given to us all, that we might be free and that we might appreciate each other's opinions and be tolerant and accepting. And we say this humbly, in the name of thy Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. And it is my goal again this year, the council, you know, the first year I was elected mayor, I invited members of different religious organizations, churches to come, and I'm going to do that again. So you'll see more of that. We typically do the pledge and so, but I like to have a little variety occasionally. Let's see. No scouts here tonight, are there? Oh, there is one. And okay. Typically, if there are scouts here, we invite the scout to come forward and tell us three things. Don't want any personal information, but troop number, why they're here, what they're working on, and just in general their school, so we get an idea of where you're at in the city. So we invite you to come up to the microphone, and we'll coach you. How's that? So you'll be okay. So first of all, let's see, your PAC number, I guess it is, if I see the blue shirt. Speak right into that little microphone there.
I don't really think I have one.
Okay. Then what are you here working on tonight?
Um, I'm not really working on anything. I just came here with my mom.
Okay. Well, I think there are requirements in the coving program where you do need to do some things in your community, so this will count towards that. So thank you for coming. And which school do you attend?
Neil Armstrong Academy.
Okay, so we know what part of the city you're in. Thank you very much for coming tonight.
Problem.
And now we can say he's spoken in the city council meeting. And that was the only one. And no elected officials here or anyone we have to be concerned with there. So next, we go to our minutes of April 17th, to the council for a motion.
I move to approve the minutes.
Properly done. Any discussion? See none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. It passes unanimously. The minutes approved. Next, we have a presentation, and I believe that Leon Powell is here to make that from Utah Recreations and Parks Association. And so, yeah, if I got that right.
Yes, you did.
Okay.
So as you mentioned, thank you very much for allowing me to be here and to represent URPA and take just a couple of minutes to recognize your Parks Recreation Department. So as you mentioned, my name's Leon Powell. I'm the Executive Director of URPA. We're an organization that represents about 1,300 Parks Recreation professionals all across the state of Utah. And as a, as part of my responsibilities, as we come upon conference, conference is our biggest activity of the year, and we do nominations for awards. And then we have all of our past presidents from like the last 20, 25 years get together and choose who are going to receive those different recognitions. And we do, we end up with about 60 or 70 nominations and give out about 20 awards. So it's quite the process to go through all the different awards and see who's going to win those. So as I'm here tonight, I really have two missions. And the first one is to thank you guys, because what we find is the Parks Recreation Departments that have the support from their communities, from their mayor and council, that see the benefits of Parks Recreation and understand that, you know, we're not about just Parks Recreation. We're about public safety. We're about healthy lifestyles and trying to address childhood obesity and all those types of things that Parks Recreation can be an answer or a part of the answer to a lot of the problems in our society today. So appreciate your support of the Parks Recreation Department. And then the second thing is to be able to just talk really quickly about your rock star staff. I've been involved with URPA for a number of years, and I think West Valley City probably over-represents our association. Everybody that's in here has either been part of our Leadership Academy or has served on our board. And as you well know, their fearless leader Nancy Day is doing just a great job. I've had an opportunity to work with her, and I don't think you could have a better leader in your Parks Recreation. So it's been an honor to work with Nancy. So the award that we're giving out today is for Outstanding Program. And your staff, one of the things I learned from a mentor a long time ago is in Parks Recreation, our job is to say yes. Our job is to see that there's a problem, see that there's a need. Somebody comes to us and says, you know, you should be doing this. And our job is to say yes and then figure out a way to do it. So we feel in Parks Recreation, like swimming is a lifetime skill. That we want everybody in our communities to be able to swim. And I think Nancy and her staff kind of looked at the swimming program and said, you know what? We do not have enough of our residents and our community members that know how to swim. We can't even get enough lifeguards because we don't have enough teenagers that have been through our swimming programs and can swim. So they took that as a challenge and said, how are we going to fix that? So they got together, they brainstormed, they wrote some grants, and they came up with a new swimming program that was to try to get everybody in the community to be able to do swimming lessons regardless of their ability to pay and the resources and the ability to travel to the fitness center. So not everybody can get to the fitness center when swimming lessons are going on. So again, they took that as a challenge and addressed that and said, you know, how are we going to fix this? So they actually created a program that goes out into the community and offers swimming lessons at, I know that the one that this was in particular was an apartment complex that had a pool, and they actually partnered with that group. They got some community partners together and were able to offer a lot of swimming lessons to people that were not otherwise getting them. So because of the innovative nature of this program and the ability to really go out and get partners and the whole community involved was the reason why the past presidents chose this particular program as the Outstanding Program for 2018. So I would like, can we do like a picture? Can we have your staff come up and, like you did?
Yes, we'd invite, including our Executive Director and all our staff. Who, how many are here?
A lot. A lot of your rock star staff. So on behalf of URPA, we'd like to thank them for a great job and recognize them for this role.[552.22][552.22][Applause]
Okay. Thank you very much. Next on our agenda, we have a proclamation for Arbor Day, and I would like to read that. The city has participated in Arbor Day and has issued a proclamation for a number of years. I don't know how many, but we've been very much involved in that. So, a proclamation declaring the last Friday of April as Arbor Day in West Valley City. For as West Valley City, Utah has committed considerable time and resources to the urban forest and has chosen to set aside a special day for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day is observed in every state in the Union and throughout the world, and whereas trees can reduce erosion by wind and water of our precious topsoil, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify the community. And whereas wherever they're planted, trees are source of joy and spiritual and mental renewal. Now therefore, we, the mayor and city council of West Valley City, do hereby proclaim the last Friday of each April as Arbor Day in West Valley City, Utah, and urge all citizens to support efforts to protect the trees and woodlands and to support the city's urban forest, and urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the hearts and promote the well-being of present and future generations. That is the proclamation, and so we'll officially sign that and make that available. Next on our agenda is our public comment period. I understand, or I see a few people here have signed up to speak. Just because there will be some new ones here doing this, we remind you that you address all your comments to the mayor. It is not a discussion. It's your time to speak. We will listen. It's not a debate or question and answer period. We can follow up on that. If there are issues we need to follow up on, we will add it to our study agenda next week. So that you're not offended that we don't respond here. So you're aware by state law, policy discussions of any sort regarding issues or policies facing the city cannot be held unless it is on our agenda for the elected officials. You can say what you want, but we can't. Because they don't want us discussing policy without having notified everyone and having them come to hear the discussion, which we will do next week. Okay, with that introduction, a maximum of five minutes. We dedicate up to 30 minutes of time, and we'll go first by what's here, and we'll see how far that gets us. So Matt McPherson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did have a little bit of notes here, just because I wanted to make sure that I talked about what I was hoping to discuss. We have a lot of people here from our neighborhood. We represent the Highbury neighborhood of West Valley City. If you're not familiar with that location, it is just north of the West Valley Fitness Center, north of 3100 South and east of 5600 West. I'm here primarily, and most of us are here for two particular reasons. One is there's a proposal from Garbet Homes to rezone a parcel of land between our homes and a number of apartments and townhomes existing, which is currently zoned for single-family homes, and they would like to rezone for medium-density townhomes or apartments. And that is the first issue that we just want to let you know that us as a community very much disapprove of this direction, as we made very clear to Garbet in their meeting with us, and we have been discussing it. Many of you have received on the city council, and mayor, I assume yourself as well, have received emails directly from our homeowners regarding this. And I have brought a stack of additional letters of those that were not able to attend today. And many of the people here would like their five minutes to speak, and I'm sure we will not have time for that. But I am going to use my time and just say that there's a number of reasons why we disapprove of this, and we hope that each of you will discuss that more with us over the next few weeks as we come out and discuss this in this public comment forum. The second issue that I want to bring up that I think has two possible solutions is they, we have a very large problem with the infrastructure of the roads for our community. When I moved in to our homes, I was one of the first homeowners in this neighborhood, and it's been about 10 years now. And since that time, when they originally showed us the master plan and the zoning for the homes and the schools and the parks, we fell in love. I think that this is the best community in West Valley City. It is the best community I've ever lived in. That being said, we have seen a large number of changes to that original plan. They have rezoned areas for high-density apartments. One in particular that was built, the Pinnacle Apartments, has a problem right now with parking. One of our homeowners walked through that facility. They have 290 units, and she counted less than 250 parking spaces, including garage spaces and the space in front of the garage that the homeowners are allowed to park in. Most of those apartment owners, those apartment dwellers do not park in their garage because their garage is full of household goods and such. So they park in front of their apartments, and there is about 100 visitor parking spaces that are filled also with their residents. Since they don't have enough room, that parking then spills into the IHC clinic across the street, the hotel on the other side as well. It fills up the Target parking lot and the parking lot of the movie theater. And that has been recently been updated because these businesses have started posting no Pinnacle parking signs with towaway zones. That has forced them to start parking more and more on the south side of their complex, which has filled up Highbury Parkway, which is a single-lane road that is a primary mode of transportation. It sits right next to Neil Armstrong Elementary, and that school is a ticking time bomb when it comes to a child being hit or killed by a car because of the fact that it is a parking lot all day and all night. The city has made improvements by posting 30-minute parking and no parking zones to assist with that school area, but there is no enforcement of that. Up until recently, we've been pushing very hard with the West Valley City Police Department to try to improve on that enforcement. And we've been working with the Public Works Department to move some of the signs and get them into the right locations to help us. But that has forced unfortunately many of them to park in into our community. And we have CCNRs, we have an HOA, and these CCNRs state that our homeowners can't park on their own streets at night in front of their own homes. Yet they come out, and their home is surrounded by vehicles that don't belong to the people that live in our community. That is very frustrating to them. We have some proposals on how we think that the city can help us fix that, but my time is up. So I will leave that to others that may want to discuss that with you. Can I bring this up and hand this to you?
Yes. Okay, to recorder. Thank you. Next is Nicole McCray.
Greetings, Mayor. Thank you so much for having us here. I've prepared a statement. Thank you for allowing me to speak with you tonight. My name is Nicole McCray, and I serve on the Highbury Place Ivory Homes HOA Board. Several years ago, myself and some other concerned members of our community stood in front of you and spoke about a parking issue that was being caused by the residents of the recently-built Highbury Pinnacle Apartments located just south of our housing development. Our complaint then was that cars were parking all along the north and south sides of Highbury Drive, causing a visual impairment and a safety hazard to students and other pedestrians walking to, from, and around Neil Armstrong Academy. You heard our concerns, and you put in 30-minute parking zones along the south side of Highbury Drive, as well as no parking zones on the Bricksham Drive Bridge. And for a while, it worked to create a safer environment for pedestrians. I'm here tonight to request that we find yet another solution to our parking problems created by the Pinnacle Highbury residents. They are having to pay to park in their garages or using them as storage facilities, and as a result, do not have enough parking. As Highbury Place owners, we have had to call West Valley Police frequently as there have been very little enforcement of the 30-minute and no parking zones, with the apartment residents blatantly parking in these zones overnight and during the day with no consequence. The homes on Dartford Way and Bricksham Drive deal with apartment vehicles parking in front of their homes at all hours. They dump trash, they bang on our garages, and they break our noise ordinance. After about 9:00 PM, the Bricksham Bridge has cars parked solid on both the west and the east sides of the street, reducing the bridge to single-lane traffic. I am concerned that emergency vehicles will not be able to access our community using Bricksham, and in fact, that has occurred. Many of us moved into an HOA-governed community with CCNRs because we wanted to avoid these types of issues. I have homeowners that are contacting me personally, weekly as their board member, sometimes daily, asking for us to help with a solution. I propose that the no-parking signs that are currently on Bricksham move further south as they are only in the middle of the bridge, and they need to cover the entire bridge. We ask that Dartford become parking by permit only. I would like to see the owners of Dartford be issued some permits so that these residents have guests and such during the day, that they will not be ticketed. We ask that the apartment dwellers parking on that road be issued tickets for not having permits or towed for violating the specially permitted areas. Recently, we were informed of a possible rezoning of the land directly north of us for 153 more units. Even with their plan of a two-car garage, I fear that this plan will exasperate the already significant parking issues that we have all been facing, mainly created by the Pinnacle Highbury, as I have stated before, but also the current Ivory Townhouses and the Garbet Townhouses, who also have vehicles parked solid down Deebury and Highbury Drive. Imagine if only half of the units that need a spot for a third car, that's about 75 more vehicles that will be parked on the road. I foresee crowded streets, our crowded spaces, rain spaces, and significant parking issues if rezoning moves forward. Please, please, please keep this parcel zoned low-density for single-family homes as I believe, and many, many of our homeowners believe, that Highbury cannot support these vehicles in our roads. Thank you so much for letting me speak. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Darren Blanchard.
I brought some visual aids. Is it okay to give these to you?
Yes, to our city recorder.
My name is Darren Blanchard, and I live in the Highbury community in West Valley, across the street from the Pinnacle Highbury Apartments. I would like to express my concerns with the parking issues that we've already talked about with Matt and Nicole. The parking has become a major issue. The signs that the city has graciously put up a couple of years ago helped for a very short time. The signs go widely disregarded by the tenants from these apartments. The 30-minute zone was put in place so that the people who have children attending Neil Armstrong have a place to drop off their kids and pick them up in the afternoon without being ticketed. But that's not what it's being used for. There are people who are parked there all night long, all day long. As well as the no-parking zones, people park in these as well. I've called the police myself several times to have them ticketed, and it seems like a big waste of resources on their part, but they are nice enough to come most of the time. The issue with the parking is a dangerous one. We have a lot of little kids that are walking to school, and the cars that are coming out of the apartment complex, cars coming out of the Highbury neighborhood cannot see when a car is coming. And it's not a matter of time when an accident will occur. It already has. A few weeks ago, my friend Lysander got into an accident there, T-boned a car that was coming out of the apartments. It was no one's fault. They could not see. There's cars parked all the way up to the intersection of the driveway there. I propose that the city do something with this intersection, whether it be a light or more signs or painted curbs because the tenants park right on the curb, right next to the intersection. The 15-foot rule that is a rule is a shady area or gray area according to the police. They can't ticket the cars that are parked right at the intersection because it's not technically an intersection. It's a driveway into the apartment complex. This needs to change. It's a dangerous area. The traffic issue is another thing which I'd like to tie into the new proposed lot of land that Garbet is hoping to change to be a medium-density plot of land. We as a community have discussed this, and we are vehemently opposed to this. We would like to have the support of the city council in opposing Garbet and having this changed to a medium-density lot. The, if you look at the map I gave you, I've marked in red all of the high-density areas. These are apartments and townhomes that currently exist. Orange is the proposed land, and then the blue is our neighborhood of single-family homes. We cannot support more medium or high-density homes in this area. We are beyond capacity. The parking issue just puts a period on the end of that. The traffic issues in the morning are major already, and to go in and add another 190 units is going to just break us. As a community of families, we would like to see single-family homes go into this area because we want to have good neighbors who are invested in our community, who purchased their homes and are in it for the long haul. As homeowners, we're invested in the community. As homeowners, we show up to these meetings. As homeowners, we are on the PTA. We are the ones that are pushing to have this neighborhood become what it could be. As Matt said, our Highbury neighborhood, I think, is one of the best in West Valley. West Valley has always had a stigma of being the most crime and gangs and things like that. That may be true, it may not be true, but it has that stigma. I think that pushing the area like Highbury to be single-family homes is what's needed to pull us out of that. We don't need more apartments. We've personally all seen the crime increase in our neighborhood as soon as the Pinnacle Apartments have gone up. We've had graffiti and a lot of issues since then. We would propose that the city council help us with these issues, and we'd also like to propose that you allow our HOA to manage the parking issues on our streets as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Greg Bemus.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. I'm Greg Bemus. I live at 2902 South Darlington Drive. I've been a resident of the Highbury Place for a little over a year. My wife and I lived up Parkway Boulevard in Magna for 30 years. And we watched this area that we're discussing develop from the early days when the Walmart first went in, and everything grew. And as the Ivory Homes began to go in and we saw this walkable community, we thought that was pretty neat. You know, we didn't have that in our county area where we lived in Magna, and we kept it in mind. And the time came when it was time for us to make a change in our lives, when we sold our horse property and our great big home for something that was more to our needs. And we finally ended up in this community, and it's a wonderful place. It's really wonderful. And yet, I see these problems occurring also even in the short time that I've been there. And so I have a whole list of bulleted points, but I'm not going to focus on those all tonight. I just want to get on just a little bit, and then I can come back later and discuss some of the other items. But I got to tell you honestly, my first concern here... But I got to tell you honestly, my first concern here is the decreased valuation of my home. Now, I've made a large investment, and you know well as I do that homes are very, very expensive now. And we've made a large investment. And just like Mr. Garbet wants to make an investment, well, I have too. And I think I have an equal say in this investment that we're discussing. And so that my concern, along with all the others, has to do with my own home. Is more high-density, is more parking problems going to be good for me? Earlier today, my wife and I, as we drove out of our community, we saw a West Valley City vehicle parked in this proposed area, taking photographs of the streets of the cars. And unfortunately, that did not give an accurate picture every once in a while. They come pouring home. Boy, oh, boy. You should come out at night and see. Anyway, that's a concern to me. And so I'm going to focus on just a second point is the deviation from the master plan. And when we deviate like that, we create less diversity in terms of the types of homes and structures that you find in these areas. We had similar issues in Magna, too, where there was farmland, and someone said, "Well, across the street from us, they wanted to put in a veterinarian and dog kennel." Last thing I wanted, across the street from me and the neighbors, and we fought it, and that was the end of that. But that was a deviation from the master plan in that area, and I think it has some real benefits. It may need to be adjusted for the single-family home. Perhaps there are just some issues there that don't make it suitable for a development right now, but that, of course, will be up to you. So those were two items that I wanted to address towards you tonight. I appreciate your time. Good evening.
Thank you. Michael Breuerton.
Thank you for the opportunity to be able to speak here today. I'm also here to discuss the proposed zoning change and state that I'm very much against rezoning this from single-family dwellings. My wife and I moved to West Valley City back in 1994 to graduate from university. Since then, you know, we decided to put down roots here. I moved all throughout my life up to that point. We wanted to make this a better place. I became a police officer here in West Valley back under Chief Nordfeldt until I had to quit due to injury. We've helped fund a charter school here in West Valley. We donate thousands of hours and thousands of dollars worth of materials to local schools just to try to improve this city. We believe in being active in our neighborhood to improve things. So when I see a neighborhood that is threatened, that's going downhill, I get frustrated, especially when that's right where I'm living. And I want to do what I can to help it, and in this case, I don't feel like there's much I can do except come here and make a plea to you here. Just by nature, apartment residents tend to be more transitory. They come and go, and they don't have the same type of motivation socially or emotionally or financially to invest in the area to make it a better place, like residents of single-family dwellings do. We have apartments, we have condominiums, and I think changing at this point, it would be a mistake. Many people purchased homes, not just because of what the area was at the time, but the plan for what it would grow to in the future. When you look at what the type of homes that would be put in, the stores, it's becoming a nice neighborhood. Almost called a crown jewel of the city. Really, I am convinced it is simply one of the best neighborhoods in the city. And I think we need to do whatever we can to keep it that way, but both for safety reasons, traffic safety, and for crime reasons, I think that putting in medium or high-density housing would have a negative impact on the neighborhood. On Highbury Parkway there, I've sometimes caught cars that in early morning rush are tracking going as high as 60 down that road, in a 25 zone. It's ridiculous. And when you combine that with a constant stream of parked cars, it's a matter of time before either somebody coming out, going to their cars across the street, or kids coming from school, and we have a tragedy. We've had accidents, but luckily, no fatalities. But given enough time, I think it's inevitable if we increase the load, the parking load and traffic load for this area. When the Pinnacle Apartments opened, there was a market increase in home and vehicle break-ins through the Highbury Place homes. In response, we formed a Neighborhood Watch, and my health conditions, I wake up frequently throughout the night, so I always take an opportunity at that point to do a walk through our cul-de-sac and around my home, check windows and whatnot. And on one occasion, I even interrupted a burglary in progress at one of the neighbor's homes. The two people fled in the direction of the apartment complex. I don't know if they lived there or it was simply a convenient place to escape to. Frustratingly even, because there was nothing missing that we could see, and they couldn't contact the homeowners. I don't know, sound asleep, I suppose. Police number took a statement, never came. Nothing showed up in the crime reports the next day. It wasn't even shown as a criminal mischief. Another neighbor had an attempted burglary on his home. Once again, it goes down as a criminal mischief, not a burglary, because while they successfully jimmyed a window, they were apparently startled off and left the area. It gets frustrating, living in what was really a terrific neighborhood and seeing these crime rates go up. I can understand the developer's desire to try to get the most money out of his property investment, but the same is true for everybody who lives here. We've made an investment in our homes. We've made an emotional investment, investment in time in the area. And to deviate from the original plan for the community isn't fair to the existing residents of the community. These were not inexpensive homes. We specifically chose an area with an HOA in order to try to live somewhere that would keep property values up. And having a developer break their promise and set the zip code spiraling into a lower-income, higher-crime area is just, it's frustrating. I don't want to see the city heading that direction. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, we still have about six minutes of our 30 minutes. So is there anyone else who wants to speak tonight? Public comment? Okay, well, we'll go. The next was here.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Try to keep a briefing, give someone else a chance as well. My concern is-
If you will introduce yourself, since we don't have your-
My name is Jennifer Pollock. I live on Bricksham Way, directly next to the bridge, right across from Pinnacle Apartments, and my concern is, as others have stated about the parking, been here about two years. I would say five out of seven nights, every single week, I've been woken up at least twice a night by people parking right in front of my home or on the bridge after midnight. Not just parking, but parking with loud music, sitting in their cars, listening to that music for several minutes. Wakes me up a couple times a night, has woken up my son. People who are intoxicated, who will get out of their car with alcohol bottles and smash them on my sidewalk, to where my son and nephews have almost stepped on it. Littering. I've witnessed verbal and physical altercations of people getting out of their cars near the bridge. I've called the police. Sometimes they come out and the crowds have dissipated. Sometimes it's turned into arrests. I feel that, as we've stated with the safety concerns, there are cars cluttering the entire street. We've got children walking to and from school. There is no way that people can see clearly small children when there are that many cars cluttering the street. There is also a fire hydrant directly on the bridge that people are parking directly in front of, which is obviously illegal. Nothing's being done about it. My physical health has been suffering. I can't get a good night's sleep. My ability to work has been suffering. I don't get a good night's sleep. And I feel that Pinnacle, the way that they built that complex and didn't put sufficient parking in for their tenants, we are suffering the consequence as responsible homeowners for that, and it shouldn't be that way. We are paying an HOA. We abide by our CCNRs to not do overnight parking, and yet, we're being imposed upon by the tenants of Pinnacle who are not just parking, but creating disturbances several times a night. I feel that the onus is on Pinnacle at this point to come up with a solution, to either provide more sufficient parking, or the onus is, hopefully, we can get some help from the city to get no-parking signs throughout the Highbury community, specifically on Bricksham. The bridge that extends to the homes is being cluttered with cars on a nightly basis. I believe that's all I have to say for now. I would hope that some cooperation can be put into place, and I appreciate you guys listening. Thank you.
Thank you. We have two minutes left.
My name is Rod. I live on Dartford Way. I'm here to say I'm fed up. My home has been broken into. I'm almost getting physical bites almost about every single day with people from the apartments. Every single night, I have cars pulling in and out of my driveway on a constant basis. It's ridiculous. Something has got done. I am fed up. I invested money into my home with ivory homes, and it's turned out to be a living hell, living there. I've had my home broken into. I've had damage to my garage door, and I'm done. Something needs to be done, or I'll take action myself. I'm fed up.
All right. Thank you. We appreciate those of you who have come, and just by, so we get an understanding, those of you who were here on this subject and have similar feelings to those expressed, just raise your hand so we... So quite a few. Twenty-six, I counted, so that's a very good showing. Now, you are welcome to come back in future council meetings, just so that it was set up long before I came, that that would be our standard process here of up to a half an hour of public comment. So with that, thank you. You're welcome to stay and hear the rest of the exciting agenda that we have, but we won't be offended if any of you leave. We'll go on to the items that are next. Item eight on our agenda, resolutions. Yes. Oh, that's right. City manager, you might hang on just a second. I don't know that you have any comments, do you?
Well, I think I would like to just thank them as a representative staff. I really appreciate the fact that you had come, you were very well-prepared, you stated your case very clearly, and I think the council is already aware that the staff is also involved with you right now. And I know the council is also very concerned. I won't speak for them, but I know they're very concerned, and we hear you. That's all I'd like to say.
Okay, then, Councilman Buehler, and Mosif, or any other?
Thank you. I do have some comments. I'm glad to hear that you've organized Neighborhood Watch. It's good to see you come out here and express yourselves to us. And we had heard from time to time about parking problems in that area. We learned more facts tonight in this meeting and in our previous meeting. We are going to be discussing this in future agendas and trying to find answers for you. With respect to a proposal on zoning change, of course, we won't vote on that until that's on our agenda before us, but... And we can't really discuss that, but I would just say that for my part, you've been heard on that as well, and we certainly have, where we have new development and unique neighborhoods and good things happening in our city, we all have an interest in preserving that and keeping it as good as we can and making it better where we can. And I just appreciate the involvement and the words that you had to say to us tonight, so thank you.
Are there others? Okay. Thank you for waiting just a moment. Okay. Councilor speaking our track. So now, resolution. Okay. We begin with Resolution 18-44. This is to authorize the city to apply for a federal grant called Technology Innovation for Public Safety, addressing precipitous increases in crime grants. I believe this one is for some software and programs that we'll be able to utilize for purposes of tracking what's going on. It's a grant of $161,300, and so we'll be applying for that. It covers a 24-month period. So its emphasis is addressing violent crime, human trafficking, and the opioid crisis. And they can do justice, information sharing, data analysis, technology, et cetera. So that's the issue before us. So to the council, then.
I move for approval, Resolution 18-44.
Motion has been made and seconded properly before us. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion?
Just wanted to clarify a question. This is a complete grant, right? It doesn't involve matching fundings from the city?
That's correct.
Okay. That's all that?
Okay. Then, seeing no further, to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Vitesh Manu.
Aye.
Councilwoman Link. Councilman Buehler.
Aye.
Councilman Hune.
Aye.
Councilman Nordfeld.
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Next, we go to Resolution 18-45. This is authorizing the city to purchase fire station alerting systems from U.S. Digital Designs for all six West Valley City fire stations. This is a $222,951 purchase, but will be reimbursed from the Valley Emergency Communication Center. They need to replace these in order to be compatible with the new dispatch system that is being put into place. And so this is part of a countywide upgrade of over 50 fire stations, so pretty significant. And given that it's been reimbursed by that, it's very appropriate to do and very needed. That is the issue before us. To the council.
Mayor, I think it's very important that firefighters and ambulances know when there's an emergency, and I would move for approval of Resolution 18-45.
Second, properly before us. Any further comments? Okay, seeing none, to our city recorder for a vote.
Councilman Nordfeld.
Yes.
Councilman Hune. Councilman Buehler.
Aye.
Councilwoman Link.
Yes.
Councilman Vitesh Manu.
Aye.
And Mayor Bigelow.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Next, we have Resolution 18-46. This is a contract to Utah Design Center for replacement of the indoor track at the Family Fitness Center. Utah Design is for $61,900, and this Utah Design Center was the one that won the bid, and so that's pretty straightforward. We have problems with the track. Apart from even soft spots, there are some problems that need to be repaired. I think we, they said it's been there for 15 years, was it? 19 years? Okay. So that is the issue before us. To the council.
I move for approval of Resolution 18-46.
Second.
Properly before us. Any further discussion? Seeing none, to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Vitesh Manu.
Aye.
Councilwoman Link.
Yes.
Councilman Buehler.
Aye.
Councilman Hune.
Aye.
Councilman Nordfeld.
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Next, we have Resolution 18-47. This is for the replacement of the community room divider at the Family Fitness Center here in the city, and that is a cost of $38,290. The requested proposals, not many wanted to bid on it. but the company that has done other work for the city, Midwest Division Solutions, bid on it and they compared and saw that that was a good bid and so they will be replacing that. This is the same type of thing. They have ongoing cosmetic issues as well as general wear of the original walls. And so that is the issue before us. To the council.
I move for approval of Resolution eighteen dash forty-seven.
Second. Properly before us. Any further comments? Seeing none, to the city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Nordfeld.
Yes.
Councilman Hune.
Aye.
Councilman Bueller.
Aye.
Councilwoman Link.
Yes.
Councilman Fiti Samanu.
Aye.
And Mayor Bigelow.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Next, we go to our consent agenda. We have four items there. And I have to remember where this was. I have to look at the map. This was U-11.
Seventy-two.
Seventy, was it seventy-two or no, sixty-two, wasn't it? About sixty-two.
Sixty-two on our side there.
Yeah, okay. Seventy-two is too fortunate.
Yeah.
Okay, so three of these resolutions deal with issues there. The first one is two temporary turnaround easements on the property of the Strangs and Gail Evans. And then that's eighteen forty-eight, Resolution eighteen forty-nine, two slope easements from, let's see, TB J&amp;M, a limited liability company, the Strangs and Evans in this proposed Hollywood Estates public PUD Phase One. And then a stormwater and retention pond easement for those same individuals in that same location. And then eighteen fifty-one is simply a right-of-way contract and a warranty deed and temporary construction easement at forty-ninety South County Way near our fire station there for the wall that's being built up around that area. So those are the consent items to the council. Move for approval of the four items on the consent agenda. Second. Properly before us. Any further discussion? Okay, then to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Fiti Samanu.
Aye.
Councilwoman Link.
Yes.
Councilman Bueller.
Aye.
Councilman Hune.
Aye.
Councilman Nordfeld.
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, then there's no need for a closed session. We have completed our agenda. Then any final comments from the council before we take our final motion? Seeing none. Then we remind you, next week, we will have the budget in our regular meeting plus the other three meetings. Okay, so you'll be prepared to give eloquent discourses on the budget next week. With that, then, the final motion. Motion to the- All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Passes unanimously. We are adjourned.